And I see Chuck and Linda have theirs going. Meeting is being live streamed. Got it. Let me go hit the mouse. Says live on Facebook. We're ready. Linda, we good? All right. Smithville Board of Alderman Work Sessions call now called to order. First item on the agenda is discussion of the FY twenty one nine month budget update. Mr. Larson or Ms. Wagner, who's going first?
Steven is going to present both the nine month update and the budget presentation. And I just want to thank Steven as well as all staff, but particularly Steven for his efforts to put together his first proposed budget. So we'll start with the nine month update to set the scene for the 2022 proposed budget.
Sounds good.
Okay. Everyone hear me okay? And is the screen sharing the slideshow?
You're good.
Okay. Hey, so tonight I'll present a nine month fiscal year update for our 2021 fiscal year. The day that we're looking at tonight is July thirty first. We'll get started here with a few comments. And the board's approved a variety of budget amendments over the first nine month period here. So those budget amendments that have been approved are included on the budget figures. And the expenses that we see include nineteen of our twenty six payrolls. So about seventy three percent of all the wage related expenses have been paid thus far. Let's take a look here at the general fund first off. Looking at our revenues, all year our revenues have been performing pretty well at a high level budget compared to projected. I'll be budgeted about four point six million in revenues. We're projecting to bring in about five point two. We've already received about eighty nine percent of those budgeted revenues through the first nine months. And the higher projection, really when we look at the line items as to where those projections are higher, we see that in use tax. We see that in our building permit collections revenue versus budget. Then also the transfer in of remaining CARES funds that the board approved a few meetings ago. We've transferred that money in, and so that's helped pay for some other expenses that we've approved via budget amendments, including police facility study in the Main Street program. On the expense side, as we start to finish up our fiscal year, we're tracking our one time signature capital improvement projects that we're completing. So here at City Hall, we're finishing up our renovation. We have all of that completed and have one payout remaining. The downtown streetscape East project is in progress on Main Street. It's money budgeted there for that. Our transportation master plan is being completed. And then we're also working on engineering for our streets and parks facility, which is to begin. So we're tracking those one time expenses. But overall, we're projecting to standard budget with our expenses at five point seven versus about five point nine. Looking at the property tax revenues for this fiscal year, we budgeted about eight hundred eighty seven thousand. We brought in about nine hundred twenty four year to date. And we had a little bit more revenue that trickles in in the last three months. But we've received our budget. One of the tasks that finance worked on this year was making sure all the TIF revenue over the base out at the marketplace was distributed properly to the jurisdictions that were owed. Their pilots are property tax and and so that those distributions were set up correctly. So we've taken care of those. And we'll wait for the last little bit of property tax to come in here in the last few months. The property tax received through quarter three is very consistent. Now, we see about a forty thousand dollar increase from quarter to quarter through quarter three for the last three years. Looking at the sales tax revenues. The budget this year is one point two. For majority of the year, we've been projecting to be a little bit higher than that budget by about seventy five, seventy to seventy five thousand dollars. This week in the past week, Cynthia and I have had discussions with Gilmore and Bell regarding adjustments to some price chopper sales tax and in the interpretation of a provision in the agreement. And that's outlined in the packet that was provided to you for the work session. And we've accounted for those changes in the projections and lowered that projection. Fortunately, though, for this slide, we're still on the budget, projecting to bring in about five thousand more dollars than what we've budgeted, and we'll carefully monitor this in the last three months. Typically, at this point in the year, we bring in about seventy one percent of what we end up collecting. So it's good to see that figure at about seventy four and a half percent received of what we've budgeted. There's our city sales tax growth from quarter three year over year. And so at this point, even when adjusting for the price chopper sales tax, we're still ahead of where we were last year at this point. The use tax revenue continues to be a bright spot in our sales taxes and our overall general fund budget. For use tax this year, we budgeted four hundred fourteen thousand two sixty. And we have exceeded that budget here by a few hundred dollars at this point. We still have three more months to collect, so we're projecting we'll bring in about five fifty. And that that bodes well with our adjustments in the sales tax rate and the increased consumer activity during the pandemic. The use taxes really performed well. The next thing that staff's monitoring is just to see how well it continues to come in. It surged quite a bit through those first five to seven months of the fiscal year. And so we just want to continue to monitor that and make sure we're getting good receipts on our use tax. And there's the growth in the use tax year over year through quarter three. You can see we have a pretty substantial jump from last year at this point to this year. Move on and talk about the Capital Projects Fund. The Capital Projects Fund is where we've housed our expenses for our Main Street Trail and a portion of downtown streetscape East. On the revenue side, we have a little bit more work to do here at the end of the year. And that includes submitting the rest of our materials and documentation so we can get reimbursed by Zuri DNR for the Main Street Trail. So Chuck and I are working on that to get the rest of that revenue in there. We'll also anticipate a transfer of capital improvement sales tax to help finish up the payments on the downtown streetscape East project. And as that project gets completed, you'll see there at the bottom in the second bullet, we've got about a half a million dollars in project expense budgeted in there. The great highlight is on the Main Street Trail. There's the picture of all you doing the ribbon cutting and celebrating the end of the project. We've got that trail built, completed, and we've processed the last payout. So exciting to get that recommended done for the community. That's a great project that everyone worked hard to accomplish. Looking at the capital permit sales tax fund, you see there's the picture of the driveway getting laid to Heritage Park out on Main Street. This fund continues to help us afford and pay for the downtown streetscape East project. We have a majority of our projects expense budgeted in this fund. On the revenue side, our capital improvement sales tax is performing well. We've budgeted five thirty and we've brought in about four seventy. So we've already brought in about ninety percent of the budget. It is not subject to the teeth eats collections. So as we continue to do these updates, you'll see a little bit of a difference between this one and the transportation sales tax, which is subject to it. Really, with this sales tax, our first obligation was to pay for the debt service fund and the transfer to to pay for that fund. And then we'll finish downtown streetscape East project. You can see we have good steady growth in capital permit sales tax through each quarter. About eighty thousand dollars in growth year over year through quarter three. The debt service fund is really our internal in and out fund. We've made our transfer from capital permit sales tax to fully fund the expenses. And we have one more general obligation debt payment that I've just processed this week. We'll get that payment made and that'll finish up the fund. Looking at the transportation sales tax fund. This fund has helped us pay for the improvements out at Rock Creek and helping us create smoother, brand new roads for the homes in that subdivision. That's a great looking road there in that picture that's been built and overlaid. For the transportation sales tax, we budgeted five thirty in this fund for this fiscal year. Because this is subject to the tip beats collections, we have made some adjustments with the price chopper provision that I talked about a little bit earlier. We're still tracking on making that budget. Just going to watch that carefully as we finish it up. And then when we go down to the expense side. Really, the signature project for this year is getting the Rock Creek subdivision and rain trust. Ring Crest Hill tree completed in the street maintenance program. And then along with the Bridgeport Roundabout design and a little bit of funding for downtown streetscape East. The growth in transportation sales tax, you can see that year over year. Even with the price shopper adjustment, we still have growth over twenty twenty. So give a brief update on the special allocation fund. For this year, we budgeted five hundred twenty thousand in that fund. It's built out of Tiff eats taxes. The property tax revenue that's generated over the base and the CID sales tax. Right now, we've collected about seventy percent of those funds. And we're projecting to have that amount in the fund. On the expense side, we still have not done any disbursements. At this point, we don't have updated certified costs from the developer cadence. And so we haven't had any disbursement of funds. We're continuing to keep in contact with Gilmore and Bell on that front. And we'll be ready to make a disbursement once the cost has been certified. Move on to an update on the combined water wastewater fund. On the revenue side, that overall revenue number, about seventy five percent of the budget received is tracking really well. We've budgeted four point eight in revenues and we're projecting to bring in about four point nine. So everything looks really good right there on the revenue side. Nine tenths of that budget is comprised of water and wastewater sales. So you know, having good, I mean, the right temperatures out there, production of water. It's all key to making sure this fund operates well. On the expense side, we have some savings from some projects that we aren't anticipating on completing. Below on the capital improvement projects, we've got our master plan done for our wastewater system. Our Main Street Water Line completed. Our slip line sewer program has been completed. The work was solid on Main Street this summer. And we're about to begin the raw water pump station project was it, which is a significant project that'll get some help from impact fees and ARCA funds. So we'll expect to spend a little bit more out of this fund as we close up the year, but we'll have some savings. The breakdown of the sales revenue on water and wastewater. Both of these revenue streams are projecting to hit their budgets. Both are about three quarters of their budget at this point in the year. Both water and wastewater sales are projecting to exceed there. And here's the year over year growth in quarter three for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. As we've made those rate adjustments and as we've had account growth, we've seen growth in those sales. All of which is helping us to pay for improvements to our water and wastewater infrastructure and make sure people have good quality utility services. Quick overview on the sanitation fund. Really getting in and out fund as we collect revenues from our customers. We make those payments to GFL. You might see the updated sanitation trucks that drive around the city with the bright green paint. Certainly good looking vehicle. And really this one's tracking right on target for our expense and our revenue. And if we look in the last three years, we're very close to where we've been at this point in the quarter. Where both revenues and expenses are just about equal to each other. Always a little bit of variation as we come down the stretch, but close to previous years. Last fund we'll take a look at tonight in the update is the Park and Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. This fund has helped us make improvements to our recreational amenities here in the city. And you can see that with the opening of the splash pad there on the left. Year to date, we've brought in four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue. Our budget is a little bit lower than our other special sales taxes at four forty two. One of the reasons being that we are anticipating not having as high a collections in the first month that the sales tax was enacted back in November. But again, that's the sales taxes performed well. And so through the first nine months, we're about eighteen thousand short of our budget. So we're projecting to bring in about five sixty five. We've already brought in ninety five percent of that budget. Just like capital improvement sales tax, it is not subject to tip eats. So all the money that comes in for this is collected by the city. On the expense side, we've completed those splash pad improvements and projects. We have some money for the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we've also paid. And we have some money set aside for a stormwater project to complete this year as well. That wraps up the nine month budget update. Well, we have one more slide. We've got to cover the verf. I had it myself there. On the verf, there's a photo of our new vehicles. The revenues on the verf. And we have transferred about forty thousand in from the general fund to provide support. We sold eleven vehicles in our fleet so far through July. So we brought in ninety one thousand in revenue. On the expense side, we just have our leasing costs from enterprise. And we brought in about expended about forty two thousand on that. Overall, anticipating having about a twenty six thousand dollar fund balance in this fund. We'll we'll look at that in the next slideshow, but that being the difference between revenues and expenses. Really, the reason those numbers aren't as high as the budgets is a lot of those vehicles that we maybe anticipated be able to sell in the first year haven't sold yet because we haven't been able to get the new vehicles from enterprise. So we'll be taking care of that here in the next fiscal year. That wrapped up the presentation for the nine month review. Does board have any questions on any of those slides for the update?
Anybody? I can only see four people, so if you're raising your hand, just go off mute and speak up. Okay. Move on, Steven. Get your red Sharpies ready. Save it for Chuck's slides.
All right. All right, can everyone see this slide full screen?
Yep.
Okay, so make sure it's full screen for everybody because I mean that happened last time. It's a pleasure to come to you tonight and transition to our proposed fiscal year twenty two operating budget. First and foremost, I just want to thank all the department directors for for working with me on my first budget. Helping me understand the city and all the expenses work and getting to work with Cynthia on this budget. And just as a finance director, I really look forward to hearing your input and getting your feedback. The board's feedback on our CIP projects, our budget. So as I move through the presentation, feel free to ask questions and provide input and feedback to what we're presenting tonight. So let's kick it off and we'll start with our. Oops, I had it myself. We'll start with the general fund. And we'll start by looking at a revenue summary of the general fund. And we have a chart here that's going to display our actual revenues for fiscal year twenty. Our fiscal twenty one budget. What we're projecting to bring in for fiscal year twenty one. And then our proposed budget and we have our revenue categories. When you go into the financial statements, you'll see these are the revenue categories that are used. And you've probably seen these before, but I'll give you a breakdown here of some of the different lines. As we go to the first one here with property taxes. We covered this in the update. We had a budget of eight eighty seven. We're projecting to bring in about nine twenty six. For next year, we've received our preliminary board of equalization values. We're waiting on Clay County to provide us with the final values. But based upon what we're seeing with those values and the growth we've had in property tax over the year. We're proposing a budget of nine thirty five for property tax. Looking at the sales and use taxes. You can see fiscal year twenty, we brought in about one point eight. This year, we're going to exceed that budget, especially when we talked about use tax in the update. Our assumptions here for fiscal year twenty two are for a two percent growth on our city sales tax and a two and a half percent growth on our use tax. So we want to try to hit a blend of being conservative, but also a little bit aggressive, knowing that we have new businesses and population growth in this city and that we're going to continue to see increased consumer activity. Looking at the franchise taxes, a big majority of our franchise taxes are those collected on receipts for electricity used in the city. In terms of what we're projecting and proposing for next year, you can see we're projecting about six seventy, which is close to our budget. We are going to project a decrease for those franchise taxes. And part of that is because of the reduction in telecom franchise fees that we have seen as people continue to use the landlines less and cut those cords. We've seen that continually drop. We'll also look at a little bit at the electric franchise fees. Those tend to be pretty steady and they're really temperature dependent, along with a little bit of account growth. The license fees and permits, really not projecting much of a change there from fiscal year twenty one to the proposed budget. The big driver there is building permits. And we're anticipating to continuing to see builders coming to the city, purchase permits. Whether it's new residential construction fence permits, permits for for the home and remodeling permits. We're continuing to see that activity pick up. The intergovernmental revenues, we're seeing a slight increase to that. The major revenue there is the motor fuel tax and road and bridge tax. And so we've seen those taxes increase. Also a little bit of SRO revenue in there. The charges for services, we're projecting to bring about two sixty this year for those. And we're proposing about two thirty six for next year. The big revenue stream there is the campground revenues that we make out at Smiths Fork. So we're continuing to hold hold steady on that category. The fines and forfeits, that's for all the traffic fines and violations that occur in the city. We're projecting to bring in about one forty. We're just staying conservative there on our budget at about one eleven for next year. The interest earnings, so this has been a revenue stream that we saw a significant decrease once COVID nineteen hit in March and our interest rates on our cash balance at the bank really decreased. We haven't seen that pick up. As long as that pandemic's been on, you can see there in fiscal year twenty, we brought in one sixteen. And since then, it has dropped to about forty five thousand. So then anticipate that increasing a few times soon here. The other revenue category for fiscal year twenty one, you'll see that's a little bit higher at fifty six thousand. A lot of that is built out of the sale of personal property. So it includes, for example, the sale of the Second Creek Bridge that the board approved near the beginning of the year. For next year, we don't have those revenues in there since those are one time sale of property revenues. So we're proposing a budget of twenty nine. And the big game changer here is the transfers in. And it's really what causes the difference between the total, the grand total revenues of five point two and four point nine. And that's the CARES transfer in that we completed after the board approved that. So that's our breakdown and summary of revenues for the general fund. Here's how the percentages break out, about forty percent lumped to sales and use, thirteen percent franchise. And then we have a variety of other categories that make up the rest. Our property taxes make up about a fifth of the entire revenues. Just talk briefly about a couple of major revenue trends. You can see the red dots, they represent actual city sales tax collections. In twenty twenty, we brought in about one point two six million, one million two hundred and sixty thousand in revenues. And as a result of the discussions with Gilmore Bell and making the price chopper adjustments, we're adjusting that projected number back down. And then adding a two percent growth onto that for the next fiscal year. And we have a two percent assumption into our out year. So we hope to continue to see that grow through the years. Here's the actual collections on use tax. This one has really continued to increase as that sales tax rate changed with the special sales taxes and consumer activity picked up for online purchases. We're projecting to bring in about five fifty. And for next year, we're proposing a two and a half percent increase. And then one more major revenue I wanted to cover, talking about those franchise fees a few slides ago. We typically don't see a lot of growth in franchise fees for electricity. And it's been pretty steady. So we're projecting to bring in about four forty five, which is about the same as twenty twenty. And projecting to have a budget of four forty five for the next fiscal year. We'll move on and talk about our key operating assumptions for our expenditures in the general fund. For next year, we've put in a three percent increase for our average salary merit pool. That merit pool will be affected in May of twenty twenty two for our employees with good evaluations and good performance. We've put in a ten percent increase for healthcare and insurance employer expense. We have a new health insurance broker that we're going to be working with. So we want to be conservative to make sure we can afford those plan expenses. Put in three percent increases for electric and gas expense. Increased our fuel per gallon assumption from two fifty to two seventy five. And we've also increased our propane expenses from a dollar twenty five to a dollar fifty nine. There's also an increase in dispatching costs for police dispatching. On the expenditure summary. Our personnel services, those are our full time, our part time salaries, our healthcare expenses, our FICA contributions and our longer retirement contributions. You can see in the projected column for this year, we're looking to be below the budget. And a lot of that is attributable to vacancies and some turnover in staff. So we have multiple police department vacancies that we've experienced. And we've had turnover in staff at light position, the assistant position. So there's various savings there. For next year, that budget does increase as we budget family for those vacancies. A family health insurance plan and plan for full full staffing on that front. The contractual services, you'll see a big decrease there from twenty one to twenty two. In twenty twenty one, that's where we put our money for our engineering services, for our park and streets facility, our transportation master plan, the budget for the police facility study and our Main Street program. So all of those one time expenses comprise the budget in twenty twenty one. And so we see a decrease there in twenty two as we don't do those things next year. Commodities stay pretty consistent. A lot of that is our repairs and maintenance to our buildings, equipment, vehicles and software. And then the last category there is our capital outlay. One of the reasons that's higher in twenty twenty one is that's where our capital improvement projects are comprised. So our city hall renovation is budgeted in there. For twenty twenty two, we have our police vehicles budgeted in there, which I'll touch upon in a moment. And the last bit there is our transfers out. That's the transfers to the verf, which I'll also cover in a second. Here's the breakdown of expenditures by department. The city of Smithville puts a The city of Smithville puts a tremendous investment into public safety as reflected by the forty two percent for police and animal shelter. There's also a significant investment in our streets and our transportation at seventeen percent. Together, public safety and transportation comprise about sixty percent of the budget. And there's also a significant investment in our parks and recreation so that we have outstanding amenities and recreational facilities. And so together, those three categories nearly tally to seventy five percent of the budget. With development, finance and administration and board and senior center expenses making up the rest of the graph. Here we'll talk about our expenditure highlights and feel free to jump in with any questions here, feedback and input as we move through these. For fiscal year twenty two, we've looking to make an investment of about a hundred and thirty five thousand into replacing three police vehicles. As we continue to evaluate those vehicles, we'll make a decision on whether lease those vehicles or enterprise or purchase them via cooperative bid. We've also got twenty thousand dollars from the general fund that'll provide continued support to the birth. We have twenty thousand from the general fund and twenty from the water and sewer fund. And we've matched that up based upon the vehicles that we currently have in the leasing program and what service areas they're used for. We're going to have a expenditure of fourteen thousand dollars or planning to for Direction Finder Citizen Survey that we can gather citizen feedback on our services in the city and how we're doing on customer service. We've budgeted ten thousand dollars for a plotter and printer so we can create maps and scan documents. We're also looking into the potential for leasing that plotter printer. Ten thousand coming from the general fund and ten coming from the water and sewer fund. We're continuing to work on our GIS and asset management. Gina Pay, our management analyst, has been working on that front with Chuck. We have fifty thousand dollars that we'll plan to spend next year in the budget or proposing to spend. We also did budget for that this year, but we aren't anticipating using as much of those funds as we've budgeted. Maybe maybe fifteen to twenty five thousand and talking with Chuck, but we'll save some money there. Continued highlights, we have seventy five thousand dollars that we'll budget next year for electrical upgrades to the campground. We'll finish phase two and phase three. We had a revenue that's going to support this through care's funding. We've put twenty thousand dollars in the budget for the purchase of ten patrol rifles for the police departments so they can handle any necessary situations that require those. Eight thousand dollars for contracted snow removal so we can service an additional neighborhood in the city. And also in case of large storm events that we can be prepared for that. Budget a couple thousand dollars for improving our communication and our newsletter postings, improving the formatting on that. We've put thirty three hundred dollars in the development department so they can have greater efficiency in their software operations and coordination and encode. And then we've added about five hundred dollars for the janitorial services renewal with citywide maintenance, renewing that contract. Any comments or questions on those items at this point?
Hey, hey, Stephen, I don't know if the Chief Lockbridge could just expand a little bit on the purchase of the rifles. I had a question for a citizen. So I don't know if he could expand a little bit on that for us.
Sure. What would you like to know?
Specifically for just the allocation, will it go into all the vehicles? Is this factored in? Ammunition factored in, training, storage after the shifts, just a little bit about that, chief?
Yeah, it's it's factored into, that includes purchase of rifles, any peripherals on the rifles, which would include swings, lights and optic systems for them as well. Mounts for the cars and ammo for the necessary training to get everybody up to speed and everybody qualified on a new platform.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Yeah. And Dan, just if if you weren't aware, the officers that do currently carry rifles, they have to carry their own personal. And they are used for things that none of us always think about, but sometimes deer get hit and other things happen. So.
I appreciate that, Mary. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments from any board members thus far? All right, I'll move on here to our unfunded request for the general fund. So as we evaluated the budget and looked at our revenues and expenses, these are the requests that we've logged that we still have not funded for next year. So we've also ranked ordered these in order from one to five from the the highest priorities to lowest. The first request there that's unfunded at this point is the implementation of the classification and compensation study recommendations. So as staff get those recommendations back from the consultant, we'll look to see what the cost is for that and how that could work into the budget. We also had the request for the neighborhood grant for beautification improvements. And then we have three positions there, two in our parks department, one for maintenance and one for marketing parks events. And then a street maintenance worker position.
Any comments? Do we have a ballpark number to plug in for any of these?
I'll jump in there, Stephen. On the classification and compensation study recommendations, we really don't know. The neighborhood rant, Anna has done a little research on that on what some other communities are doing. We could, you know, that could be anywhere from twenty to two hundred thousand dollars. And if that's something the board wanted to take a look at, we incorporate into the budget. That's something we could bring forward for discussion as to what something like that would look like. On the three positions, if you'll recall, the parks maintenance worker position as well as the communications, marketing and event coordinator position were included in the parks and recreation master plan. Would really like to be able to fund all three of those in in the not too distant future. One of the things we'd like to see come out of the compensation and classification study is some better understanding of the parity or the comparison between the salaries of parks maintenance and street maintenance employees and where another position would fit. Would like to perhaps at midyear discuss this with the board once we have a better idea of class and comp study and what costs might be related to those new positions placed in in the compensation plan.
So the next question on the parks maintenance and the street maintenance, if, and this is for Matt and for Chuck. If you had them open, would they be able to get filled?
I don't know if Chuck, I don't know if Chuck and Matt or I or anyone can can answer that question.
I mean, you guys have both had opens recently. Did you get a flood of applications or was it tough?
Yeah, we had, when we did the parks maintenance position for the position one, we had, I think we had three applicants that were worthwhile. That's how we ended up with one of our guys now.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got two utility worker positions open. We have had difficulty trying to find anybody even to show up for the interviews. Street maintenance worker, we had a position out a year ago. We did have a couple applicants, but I I don't know. The utility positions are a little bit tougher to fill.
Mayor, if I might jump in as well, the part of the reason this is, I don't know if there's any priority really between the three positions as to which would be more important for filling. But really, if we look at unfunded needs, the highest the highest level of need that I see as the city administrative perspective is ensuring that we implement the classification and compensation study to ensure that all of our current employees are where they need to be in classification. So if there are salary adjustments, this is also looking at benefits and those those other other compensation type items. I want to make sure that we are are taking care of our current employees competitively against the market so that we are not only an employer that people want to stay with, but an employer that people would want to work for. And I think that's the first step in being able to recruit fairly as well.
I don't disagree with you on that is the top priority since that's at the top of the list. I just wanted to know where we sat with being able to recruit currently. So I think we're going to spend money on improving the newsletter that other that communication, marketing, event coordinator type position is important. Especially with the senior center in the square getting more activity and our rec programs growing quite a bit. Even if that is a part time position, I think we'd have plenty of work for that person.
Got a question about the neighborhood grant. Is that covered from our budget? Are we seeking federal grants?
But no, this Alderman Chevler, I think you're the one who brought this up. Do you want to kind of explain where you're at on this one?
Yeah, essentially, you know, I kind of saw this from some other neighboring communities where, you know, they offered a some sort of a grant to maybe some neighborhoods, some HOAs or something if they would help, you know, they wanted to put like a sign monument or something in like in the city right away or something, some sort of a partnership possibly with the city and our parks land to, you know, build some structures or or something like that. So I was thinking that would be might be something that we could do to just encourage other folks to, you know, take a take a part in in making the city look look good.
Yeah, I know John had mentioned a sign at Rollins and I know Alderman Sarver has lived with the trail situation at Harbor Lakes and Marv, I'm sure you guys had a few things over in Cedar Lakes too or HOA or whoever would want to make improvements and have money available where it's a matching, you know, whether it be half match or twenty five percent match or whatever the parameters end up being. So yeah, it'd be our it'd be our money.
Grant piece would be us granting money to to those neighborhoods.
Yeah. And Cynthia, I mean, what what I think, what what would you recommend as as something to put out there, just maybe like a startup? To start something like this up?
You know.
See the interest?
Yeah, and I think I think Liberty's program and it's been around for a while. It was not there when I was there, but they've they've implemented that more recently. I think they have two hundred thousand dollars in their program and they give grants of anywhere from five to, I think, twenty five thousand dollars. You know, I think starting at something like a twenty five to fifty thousand dollars that we could do five to ten thousand dollar max grants might be something we could look at. If this is something the board would like us to take a look at, we can put a placeholder number in and obviously bring up a program forward for you all to take a look at. I think I think starting small.
Yeah.
Seeing what success we've got would certainly be something that we could could take a look at.
Yeah, then I I would be okay with with that that recommendation if if others on the board would.
One thing I want to note, anything that we do with regard to the unfunded request, all that does is those would be funds that would would continue to reduce the the fund balance excess that we have. Just want to make sure we're all aware of that.
Yep. I'd also, you know, one thing we did, you did mention was the potential looking at leasing the plotter versus buying because, you know, twenty thousand there. But yeah, there's something would have to probably give or we'd be there just that much more out of balance.
And I mean, I I mentioned this to Cynthia the other day, but I mean, I I'm I'm not against reducing that excess cash that that we have sitting out there. I mean, we we've got we've got healthy reserves. And I just, I'm not, I've never been a supporter of having just a pile of cash laying out there of tax money. So if there if there's ways we can use that to improve the community, that to me would be a great use of that of that money.
And I think it's something if we fund it and we don't get requests, right, we roll it over and maybe next year we only have to throw in whatever got taken out of it, right? What if it becomes something fairly popular, then we can look at increasing it?
I would like to be forward with it. I agree. I agree with John.
Okay, is everybody okay with twenty five, like, well, again, in twenty five thousand for the first?
Yeah, I agree. We started out small. We've got a lot of things to do for the city first. But but staying small, get it started would be a good idea.
Five thousand?
Five thousand?
Twenty five thousand, you said?
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, Steve, you were cutting out a little. You feeling all right? Anyone else?
And as far as how that's distributed, I mean, I I think that it might just need to be a case by case basis, maybe. Because I mean, it's possible that, you know, if there's a neighborhood that's willing to do all the work, you know, themselves, maybe. You know, that might be, you know, they may not need to put up as much of the cash. I mean, if they've got some of the labor. Or or whatever, you know, so I mean, I don't I don't know that just a one to one match is is always appropriate.
Yeah, you talk about in in kind versus all just cash?
Yes.
What I'd suggest, now that we have, I I think what sounds like direction from the board to include twenty five thousand in the budget, then staff can start working on a program to bring forth a recommendation for board review and and approval so that we could implement it after the first fiscal year.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Anybody else before we move on? All right.
Okay.
Hang on, I gotta step out for one minute. I gotta call. Be back.
You want me to continue to move forward?
You're good to move forward, Stephen, I think.
Correct. Okay. So yeah, like, like John had mentioned, Alderman Chevler had mentioned, we do have a, are proposing a change in fund balance, a negative amount when we look at our revenues and expenditures that are proposed for fiscal year twenty two. When we started fiscal year twenty one, we brought in about three point five million in fund balance. We're projecting to spend about five point seven in expense and bring in about five point two in revenues. So we're projecting to use about half million dollars in fund balance, about five hundred and forty four thousand. That would bring our ending fund balance down to about three million dollars for the end of this fiscal year. And then we'd start the next fiscal year with three million. At this point, what we've shown to you tonight in the revenue summary, it's four point nine million in revenues. And what we've discussed with expenses, about five point two. When we take the board's input that we just provided with twenty five thousand for that grant and add that to expense, that take our net and change, net change in fund balance to about two seventy five, two seventy six there. So we'd be having an ending fund balance of about two million seven hundred and thirty five thousand somewhere in there after putting that grant in. Let's take a look at that now with our required reserve analysis. So looking at twenty one, we'll start there again, looking at ending this fiscal year with about three million in ending fund balance. And then when we move into twenty twenty two, projecting to end with that two point seven million, two point seven six one. Our general fund requirement, reserve requirement is to hold forty percent of our operating budget in reserves. So when you look at this graph and you look at the orange line, the orange line reflects our operating budget for next year and years beyond in the next five years. So as our operating budget increases, as we have increases to salaries and operating costs, we do need to hold down forty percent of that budget. So as we continue to progress past budgets, staff will monitor this and make sure that And make sure that we're using the appropriate levels of excess cash and making the right investments our community. While also retaining that reserve so that we have money on hand for emergencies or other things that come up. So this will be a critical piece for us to continue to monitor a, as we update our forecasts. At this point though, and looking at the out years, we continue to retain that reserve that we're required to hold. Does the board have any more input or feedback on the general fund and what we talked about before we transition to our next fund? Okay, if not, we'll take a look at the transportation sales tax fund and look forward to continue to hear your feedback and input as we talk about the projects. We'll move through our, our special sales tax funds next and feel free to add in your input and feedback as we talk about the projects. So there, there's the workout at Rock Creek that we've been able to pay for with transportation sales tax. Here's our proposed five-year CIP for the transportation sales tax fund. Next year in fiscal year 22, we budgeted $300,000 that'll help us do asphalt overlay. At Tillman Road and Hospital Drive. We've also got $100,000 that's budgeted for the Fourth Street Terrace Road repairs. So we can make repairs to that road after we do a utility improvements out there. In the next coming years, we have a signature project in fiscal year 24. When we go to complete the construction on the commercial street sidewalks, it'll provide sidewalk access of commercial street towards the school. We also have revenue that's budgeted, plan for a mark reimbursement as we expense. Construction costs to build those sidewalks. Also, you'll see at the very top, we've allocated $300,000 each year for annual asphalt overlay. And so as staff continues to update the PCI, the pavement condition index. Will get new projects plugged into that row and, and get new streets ready for Millan overlay as we make those evaluations. Here's our list of our pending projects that are outside the five-year CIP. And so as I mentioned, with the 300,000 that we've slotted each year, as we evaluate the PCI and evaluate the priority. Staff will look at plugging in these types of projects and other projects that are, are ready to go into the five-year CIP. You can see here though, with these pending projects, we have almost 2.1 million, over 2.1 million in needs out there. Our transportation sales tax five-year forecast is shown here with the fund balance in yellow. Like we talked about in the budget update, the transportation sales tax is subject to the, the TIP eats. And so with the price shopper provision, staff has made update to the projected ending fund balances. So those balances are a little bit lower than when we reviewed the CIP in June during the initial proposal. But we still look to hold on to adequate reserves to pay for those projects. We'll just carefully monitor that and also plan to make adjustments if needed. Certainly, there's some, some leeway with the annual Millen overlay budget of 300,000 that we can tweak and work. If we find that we close in on the ending fund balance and, and get a little closer than what we would like to be in. Any input or feedback on those projects in the transportation sales tax fund from the board? If not, I can move on to the capital improvement sales tax fund. See there, there's the work at Heritage Park on the driveway. And here's the proposed five-year CIP for the capital improvement sales tax fund. The first obligation for this fund is to make our annual transfer to debt service payment. So before we plan for those projects, we want to make sure that we can make our debt service payments. Next year, we have about $100,000 that's budgeted for the downtown, downtown street skate north project. And the engineering for that. And then fiscal year 23, we have 600,000 that's budgeted. For the street skate phase three project to the north. In that same year, we also have funds that are allocated for the downtown gateway sign. 70,000 for engineering and 200,000 there for construction. And beyond that, we don't have any projects slotted in, but there is some capability there to potentially look at more debt service payments. Just depending on, on the strategy and, and what projects we have in the future, we have some capabilities there that we'll continue to look at. Here's the cash flow forecast for the next five years. As we finish up this fiscal year, we're carefully going to monitor this fund and make sure that we have, leave this with positive reserve. As we finish up the downtown street skate east phase that we're constructing right now. As we move through the fund, we'll plan to rebuild a fund balance in the next five years and that give us a future capability. Any input or feedback from the board on those projects before we move on? Okay. So we'll look at our last special sales tax here, the park and stormwater sales tax fund. In June, we had $150,000 plugged in for each year for parks projects. Since then, the staff has worked together, Matt, Cynthia and myself. We've consulted the Parks and Rec master plan that the board formally approved last month. And we've inputted projects from that master plan into the next five years. So as you look there for next year, we've slotted in the neighborhood park at Diamond Crest. At $275,000 budgeted there. We have 150,000 budgeted for stormwater master plan. And then we also have 60,000 that's set aside for engineering for core curb and stormwater improvements at Quincy Owens. In fiscal year 23, we're planning for another neighborhood park at Emerald Ridge. And we would look to complete our construction for the curb and stormwater at Quincy Owens in that year. In 24, we look to do a couple of shelter houses at Heritage Park. And then in the out years, we'd continue to budget for annual stormwater projects. And we would start to put together a signature project for doing some sport courts out at Smith's Fork Park. Budgeting 300,000 in back-to-back years in 25 and 26. Here's the cash flow for the park and stormwater sales tax. You can see that fund balance steadily grows year over year. And that's really a strategy that staff have put in place so that we can start to save up. And pay for larger, more signature park projects. In the Parks and Rec master plan, we have some very aspirational projects. And in the next five years here, as indicated by the blue. We're strategically trying to save for a large park project, whether it be the community center or one of those large signature projects. So the strategy here is we can continue to retain a fund balance and grow it each year. So that we can have adequate reserves in the next four to five years to get a great start on that project.
Yeah, so, so quick question. Are we getting ahead of ourselves doing the Quincy Owens stormwater before we have the master plan?
Chuck, you have a comment for that?
Yeah, I'm trying, trying to get unmuted. And that's been a. A problem area since before I got here and was identified. So I'm sure it would come out as, as one of the top things to do. We could, we could definitely push it off pending that, but the stormwater master plan, if we get started early enough. We could have before the end of the year and still use the $60,000 to do the engineering for whatever that first priority is.
Okay.
So it doesn't have, I mean, it says Quincy Owens. If something else comes to the top, comes to the top of the list, we could sure change that.
And are we doing a bunch of work over that area too with the fourth terrace and fourth street? Are we going to detour people into a, a detourable situation if we're working on both, both ends?
Well, we'll have to take that into account. We do have some work over on fourth terrace and, and water line and storm sewer and curb and. Yeah, the whole thing. So we just, we just got to coordinate that and know what we're doing.
And we also got the, the sewer stuff we're doing over there right now, right, Highland and Quincy?
Correct.
Okay, just want to be aware that we're, don't want to upset everybody by tearing up the streets every single month.
Yep.
Any other comments or input on the funds, projects? Right, we can move on to talk about the water and wastewater fund next. We'll take a look at the CIP here for the water and wastewater fund. In fiscal year 22, this is certainly one of the largest CIPs in terms of the number of projects and that we're looking to complete of any fund. And as we, as we look at fiscal year 22, we have a number of projects that we're looking to complete. Including finishing engineering on the raw water pump stations, a few invoices there. More than a few, a few left to pay in 2022. Our fourth street and fourth terrace engineering and construction projects. Improvements include a floating aerator, lagoon, lagoon cleaning out of the water plant. HVAC system, our GIS asset management efforts that have our cost split. With the general fund. UV lights out at the wastewater plant. Plugging in some money so we can continue to do our updates, our utility rate study. Woods court, wood station rehab. And then getting into our premier project for next year and the projects that we held our work session on last time. The West Bypass, 144th Street Lift Station Engineering. And looking at next year and fiscal year 23, the construction of the lift station in the West Bypass. And recently Cynthia and I met with Piper Sandler to look at the COP option for financing that project. This week we'll be reaching back out to them to start to get a timeline of all the, the work and materials and documentation that we need to start putting together. Per the direction we got from the board and the work session on August 3rd. As we continue to look at the CIP for the next five years, we have some really significant investments in our water and sewer infrastructure. And they start in 2023 and 24 with engineering for water plant expansion. And then as we move down to 2025 and 26, oh yeah, but significant amount of funding set aside for water plant. Expansion, construction, $10 million there. Wastewater treatment plant expansion in 2026. And when we look at our pending five-year CIP, we also have further needs. Some of which are based upon population growth and expansion of the city and also our wastewater treatment plant expansion. And so together there, when you look at that five-year CIP total, it's totaling nearly $22 million. In infrastructure improvements to our water and wastewater system. We have about 13 million in pending needs. So those projects that we've talked about have driven the need to make adjustments to our rates. We'll talk about those in a little bit here.
So, so quick, quick question, Stephen, why is Forest Oaks on there?
We still have Forest Oaks on there, just as, to see if it's something that the board still wants to do. I think when we talked about it in our work session, Chuck, we talked about how it's not, that the cost benefit analysis isn't there, but. I think, you know, we're open to certainly getting it off the CIP. Chuck, is there anything there that I missed?
No. You know, if, if some development comes in, we, we would hope that the development would start helping us to pay for that. We may need to participate at some level. As we work our way south, but yeah, at this point. I'm trying to see where it's at in, in your list here, Stephen.
It's in 25, but we don't have engineering for it. We just have construction.
Oh, okay.
And right away acquisition is going to be painful too, because we're already going to have to, we'd already started condemning properties that we pulled back onto, so. $3 million for a 53-year ROI plus whatever other engineering and.
Yep.
Legal costs is still to me not priority, especially not in the next five years.
Yeah, I don't know that that necessarily needs to be in there if we, if, if the board doesn't see the future need.
Unless some land changes hands, I don't see it as a priority. Anyone else?
I, I second that. I, I think we should move it off just so it doesn't throw our numbers at this point. We're reallocating the, that, those funds elsewhere.
I mean, Alderman Harbin, you got a pretty good pulse on the commercial real estate market in Smithville. Is anybody. Listing or trying or, I mean, listing or willing to sell anything south of 144th long 169?
I've not seen anything at this point, certainly. Doesn't mean something would come, but you know, south of it, I believe gets into Kansas City, doesn't it? Or not quite yet, I guess to be down a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's still Smithville to a degree, but no, I think everything's kind of north of that, Mayor.
Okay.
I would take it off the five-year plan, but don't take it off the radar.
Yeah. Yeah, e, e, even the Forest Oaks developer came and met with Jack and I probably two years ago and hasn't pulled any kind of plans. Or done anything to even expand that subdivision, so. And then Dunham, I know we have something on the agenda tonight, I believe, to peel off part of his land that's going to go to a. 10 acre parcel, so that was going to be a multiple houses at one point. It's not going to be now, so. You know, it's a lot of money for not a lot of payback.
I can place that project on the pending list, if that's, is that the board's desire to do that?
I'd, yeah, I'd like to see, if you want to plug in something there around, you know, like Owens Branch or something north, that's going to give us a little more. Tie to that wastewater master plan and some of those bigger needs where there are houses going in. Yeah, because that Owens Branch gravity line one is 2 million. I'd rather see something like that plugged in. Okay, or any of the other things above the line there?
Yeah, and that's, Mayor, that's, we'll do this, we'll take a look at the, the master plan and plug something of. A high importance there, that, that gives us a little more flexibility in that plan.
Yeah, those river crossings are never easier fun, so.
What we want to do too is make sure that we're looking at capacity and growth on the north end as well.
Yep. Keep that buffer.
Okay, any other comments on those projects? We can move Forest Oaks to the pending list and then I'll. We'll look at the Owens Branch projects or consult Chuck and Cynthia. We can get some other projects moved down there per the plan, so.
Yeah, and I want to see, once we get the transportation master plan back, I want to see how these overlay with that. Because if we are going to lay a water line, we want to make sure we're not putting it down where there's new street going in. So I know we're still waiting on that for some of these out year projects. I think the 22 projects are pretty safe since they're mostly. In areas where we're not going to have a major road project or. And for, in case of fourth street, we are going to overlay that after, so.
Right, we'll look at the unfunded request for water and wastewater. At this point, we do have one utility maintenance worker position that we have not added yet to the budget. I think when we, we talk about rates and we talk about projects. Looking at the capacity to pay for the projects right now is, is really what is driving our budget. We'll continue to evaluate the position and look at the budget capacity for it in the future here. We'll take a look at the water and wastewater fund, five year forecast here. We looked at this graph back in June during the work session on the C I P update. One of the things I wanna point out first is. We have a, we will retain a cash position. Of a positive one for this ending fiscal year and the next ending fiscal year. In twenty twenty three, you see that does go to the negative side. The strategy would be with the Hundred Forty Fourth Street Lift Station in the West Bypass, we would take those. Expenses out of this model. And pay for that project using the C O P, which would then push that ending fund balance back into the positive. And it would push it up into a positive range of. Two to two and a half million, because we're taking three and a half million out. And putting it into a C O P, so we'll get the model updated for that and can review. As we look in the out years, those numbers then again go down when we plug the C I P projects into the model. So we'll have to look for debt financing in the future to pursue those projects.
So when you guys look at that C O P, is there an option to look at our other C O P that we brought out a couple of years ago to refinance that and roll it into one? I know we saved some money last time doing that.
Yes, that's one of the things we'll review. And Stephen and I were talking today after a board discussion this evening. We'll be in contact with Piper Jaffrey tomorrow to start studying up the process of. The timeline for the issuance of C O P. There are a number of ordinances and and processes we need to go through. And we'd also need to work with Piper Jaffrey to. Go through a process for a bond rating and we'd wanna do that this fall, so. We, one of the things that we would address with Piper Jaffrey is. How we can reduce the interest on on any existing debt that could be pulled in there.
Appreciate it.
The combined water and wastewater fund has a required reserve of twenty percent of the operating budget. So it's a little less than the general funds policy. But the same, in the same principle, as we look at the operating budget grow in the out years. And exceed three point two, three point five and three point six million in the next five years. We need to hold a twenty percent reserve, so. When we look to finance those projects, as we get closer to those project timelines. We'll look and make sure that our ending fund balance stays ahead of that reserve and that we have a good cushion between that reserve. And able to pay for all the necessary operations that we have to pay for each year in that operating budget. The next part of the presentation for the water and wastewater fund will discuss the proposed changes to the utility rates. Here, I'll just provide a little bit of background on the history of what we've done with our utility rates in the last three years. So back about three years ago in August of twenty eighteen. The board had approved their resolution to work with Raffetellis Financial Consultants to look at a rate study. The following rate increases that we'll review here in the next slides continue to follow the the rate study implemented options. On the work session packet included a couple PowerPoint. Slides from the original Raffetellis Rate Study Presentation. And you'll see that the rate recommendations that we're proposing tonight continue to follow those recommendations. And this would be the now starting on year four of implementing those recommendations. And we also cross referenced. These recommendations and plug them into our own forecast. And gave that to Piper Sandler to look at the C O P issuance and the debt service costs. Not only the C O P that we would issue for the West Bypass project and the lift station. But also modeling for the C O P issuance and the debt service that we need to pay for when we do our plant expansion projects in the out years. And also just with the feedback and input that the board just gave us, taking Forest Oaks out and putting other projects in. We can get an updated, updated debt service costs and look at that again. Through our forecast. These are the proposed changes in the water rates that staff is recommending. For our, and these, before we start in on these slides. We're using a three quarter inch residential. Model or example here for each of the slides. On the monthly water fix charge for the three quarter inch residential meter, we currently charge eleven twenty one a month. Staff is proposing to increase that five percent to eleven seventy seven a month. On the water volume charge, our current rate is seven dollars eighty nine cents per one thousand gallons used. We're proposing to increase that to eight thirty three. It'd be about a five point six percent increase to the monthly charge. So overall, it's about a five to five and a half percent increase in water rates. On the wastewater side, on the monthly fixed charge, we'd look to increase that from fourteen fifty six a month. To sixteen oh two, that's a ten percent increase to the fixed charge. And then on the volume charge, we've been look to increase that from five eighty four per thousand gallons. To six sixty eight per thousand gallons. That's about a fourteen percent increase, so. Together, the average there's about about a twelve percent increase between ten and fourteen. Next, we have our average utility bill impact. And this is just for the water. In this example, we're you looking at a five thousand gallon user, which is the same gallon amount that Raffetellis used in their study. So when we look at the increases in the fixed charge and the volume charge for five thousand gallons. We'd go from fifty dollars and sixty six cents to about fifty three forty two. That's an increase of two seventy six to the water portion of the bill. Now here, we'll look at the sewer. Again, on the sewer side, going from fourteen fifty six to sixteen oh two, then on volume. Twenty nine twenty to thirty three forty. That brings us from a total charge of forty three seventy six to forty nine forty two. Raffetellis use of a five thousand gallon user in their study. When we look at winter sewer averaging. We calculate that each year for the residential contributor for our new residents, so they can come in with an average. That number is about thirty nine hundred gallons, so it's a little bit lower than five thousand. So for the average user, it might not be a five sixty increase, but for the purposes of this example, we're using five thousand gallons. So we'll be looking to increase it by about five sixty six. And this slide will put it all together. We'll combine the average utility bill impact with. The reduction in the monthly trash charge that we've talked about with the contract negotiations. With G F L and W C A. So we look through the water chain, the the changes in water, the changes in sewer. And in trash, our grand total moves from one fourteen thirty two to one twenty one twenty one. It's a proposed increase of six eighty nine. Remember, this example is for a five thousand gallon user, so. The six eighty nine impact will vary according to you there.
Any?
Any questions?
Not, yeah, let's go back to that slide, Stephen, and pause, see if any questions. Questions, comments from the board?
It really don't seem that kind of a a big increase, I mean, considering everything else is going up. I don't think that should make a big impact on anybody.
Yeah, and and also with, you know, our salaries having to go up for even the minimum wage increases and and commodities and everything else we talked about. It's not, it's not significant. I mean, our our percentage that we're paying for a gallon of gas, I think it's going up higher than that. On our average, but the. The senior bill too, which we'll probably not get to, to, cuz we haven't got to that slide yet, but you know, they'll save a little more on that trash too with the senior discount, so. And they're usually lower volume water users. And when we did the study, we talked about. You know, not impacting those that are lower volume users as much as the high users, so. They'll see even, you know, if they're a two thousand gallon user, they're not gonna see much change at all.
Right, yeah, on the, on the two thousand gallon user, you'd see what, forty, forty percent, that's forty percent of five thousand, so.
Couple bucks.
Yeah. And then senior, plug the senior discount in and you're, you know, pretty good. Thanks, Stephen. Anyone else? Comments before we move on?
I wanna briefly touch upon the ARPA funds that we're planning and intending to receive. Tonight in the regular session, you'll see that we have documents. Set up to submit for, and the application for ARPA funds. And in our five year C I P, we. Recently received some correspondence from the state of Missouri, from their accounting division about the estimate that the city of Smithville will receive for those ARPA funds. And that figure that we received back is about two million one hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. As we talked about in June, the overall strategy for those funds is to help pay for the raw water pump station project that we're. Gonna start here shortly. We've contracted with Urban Bill for about three million. And then, of course, the difference between those two figures, we would use our water impact cash to pay for. So we've got our strategy set up there and we'll be monitoring to see when those funds come in after we submit our materials. Got a plan in place for those funds here. I've got about ten minutes left in the work session for this, so I'll, I'll get through these last ten slides. Any questions on those ARPA funds? If not, we'll just touch on the debt service fund real quick. In the debt service fund, we continue to make payments on our series twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen Geo bonds that we issued. For past projects. You can see there, the nineteen Geo bonds make up. Larger portion of the debt service each month, and we'll pay on those. Got payment schedules set up through twenty thirty eight for those. In our five year forecast for debt service, we continue to hold enough fund balance to make an additional payment. Or in case of emergency, we have a reserve on hand. Touch upon the vehicle and equipment replacement fund here. In our fiscal year twenty two proposed budget for the birth. On the revenue side, we've. Worked with Enterprise to get an understanding of how much revenue the rest of our city-owned fleet is estimated to generate. They gave us a hundred and ten thousand dollars on that side. We still have another ten to twelve vehicles to trade back in. As those vehicles continue to get produced and as we continue to move through this chip shortage. We'll turn those vehicles in and get them sold and get our new enterprise vehicles. The next portion of the revenue is a twelve thousand dollar estimate for the equity that we get in for enterprise vehicles. As we trade those back into enterprise. Those vehicles we would only have for one year on a one year flip. But with enterprises' market knowledge, getting those vehicles back on market in a year with pretty minimal mileage. That's really where this works, because again, the used car market is doing quite well. And they get very good value for those vehicles. It makes the program work for us. The last part of this is the transfer in from the general fund and the water and sewer fund. Each of those funds contributing twenty thousand dollars. About fifty percent of our vehicles that we lease are used for water and service, water and sewer functions. And the other fifty percent for our general fund departments. That gives us grand total revenues of a hundred and sixty two thousand. And then on the expenditure side, the vehicle lease expense for next year. Enterprise got with them and they got us a figure of a hundred and twenty five. So we look to add to fund balance in fiscal year twenty two. Like we talked about in update, we're expecting to finish for about twenty six thousand at the end of this year. Next year, we build that up to sixty three, and then we continue to build that fund balance each year. Enough so that we have an adequate reserve in this fund. Looking at the sanitation fund here, like the mayor had mentioned. In our sanitation fund, we're proposing some reductions in the customer charge. Here on the current charge of nineteen ninety a month, our timeline. We're proposing to continue to have that charge in place for the billing cycles. From when we started in January through October thirty first. And then starting on the billing cycle for November first, we would lower that to eighteen thirty seven. And at the same time, we would also offer the senior discount for ages sixty five and older. It's a fifteen percent. Discount on the trash charge, and so that discount would be available on that November first billing cycle. On the expense side. You have a comment?
No, go ahead.
On the expense side, our payments to G F L. Would go from nineteen fifty one a month down to seventeen ninety eight a month. And the difference there between what we charge the customer and what we pay to G F L, there's a difference of about thirty nine cents there. That helps us pay for the household hazardous waste event, and that we also pay for sanitation, pay from the sanitation fund each month. There's the sanitation fund, five year fund balance. There's a reserve requirement that we just wanna try to hold a little bit in there. As a minimum reserve for the fund. We've reached the last slide of the presentation here with the fiscal year twenty two proposed budget summary. The budget summary is really supposed to just give the board an idea of where we're expecting our beginning balances to be in twenty twenty two. What we've adopted for revenues and expenditures. Those will become adopted once the board approves them, really at this point, they're they're proposed. And then what we're looking to have for twenty twenty two ending fund balance. There's a few funds we didn't touch upon tonight. There's some funds there at the bottom that really at this point are kind of non-functional, because we aren't collecting any more revenues or expenses. And we'll look to see what we, what we can do with those funds. But overall, looking to start with about seven and a half million in twenty twenty two. And having revenues of nearly sixteen million and expenditures of about sixteen million. And a big chunk of that coming from ARPA at at about two million one seventy eight. So overall, the, all these funds, when you look at it in aggregate, they're pretty close on revenues and expenses. That wraps up the proposed budget presentation. Any other questions from the board at this point?
Stephen, how do you anticipate now that you've presented this and work session? How much more work is gonna go into tightening it up before we? I guess, it's gotta be ready in August, is that correct? Or, excuse me, September, October?
Yeah, yeah, I think the next piece of this will include some inputting. The recommendations that the board's provided tonight, so for example, with the beautification grant. Getting that number plugged in, getting some arrangements done to the water and sewer C I P based upon the feedback. I know Cynthia, we have another date slotted for the. For a second discussion if needed. And I think at that point, we could potentially bring these updates to the board, but correct me if I'm mistaken on that.
Absolutely, and I guess that would be a question for the board, is do you all desire additional discussion? Really, the feedback we received this evening, I think, is the inclusion of twenty five thousand dollars for the neighborhood grants. And then pushing the Forest Oaks project out of the current capital plan and. Providing another project. Would you all like to have another discussion and review that? Or we bring it, bring the budget forward for adoption by the board. Reflecting this information. Dan, the only thing that I would indicate is that as we continue to move through. Fiscal twenty one, we'll obviously be updating the fund balance information. But really, we'll just be tweaking that in order to be able to to move forward, but. We've got a couple paths we can follow. One, we can go ahead with another meeting and review additional information that you all may want. Or two, we develop the budget as is outlined here, and we communicate with you all what project we plug in with regard to water and sewer that makes some sense. And bring the budget forward for adoption early in October.
I like what you've done tonight. They're very minimal, that needs to be adjusted. And if you sent the final version out to us, so we can read offline, I don't see no.
And if you sent the final version out to us, so we can read offline, I don't see no other planning meeting unless somebody else sees it.
I agree with you. Yeah, I agree too. Sorry, Mayor, I agree as well.
I agree, option two.
I agree as well.
So similar to what we've done in the past year, past couple budgets, just get it to us and. We'll adopt it. If we have an amendment at that time, we'll throw some out there, but if not, let's move forward.
Terrific. Thank you all very much. And as I had indicated earlier, I want to thank Stephen for his, his hard work in putting this information together. Trying to make improvements to the information that we present. I think we continue to move forward in that way and also to thank. The rest of the department directors for their work in developing the budget for recommendations this evening.
Most definitely, Stephen, great job. Yeah, if you can get Chuck to work as hard, that'd be great.
Well, I, I was going to say, since Stephen has a lot of extra energy, he should be the one cleaning that lagoon instead of contracted services. Get him a shovel and a broom, scrub brush.
That would be hard.
Yeah, that would be hard work. I, I think Stephen's good at the finance side, so.
I can neither confirm nor deny that there might be discussion among staff right now and Stephen on the kickball field and his speed, so.
He's the leadoff man for a reason now. Button run. All right, are we on the same Zoom? Linda?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, so everybody can take a quick five and then we'll start at seven oh five if that works for everyone.
Yes, please.
Is that a motion to adjourn, Alderman Kevilsky?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second. Alderman Atkins, all in favor of adjournings, say aye.
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 All opposed, all, all opposed, say no. See y'all in five minutes.